Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It's Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into our special presentation tonight, I just wanted to remind everyone that there's two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity is public comment limited to agenda items only. There is a sign up sheet in the back. If you wish to speak on one of the agenda items, please sign up for that. The second opportunity for public comment is at the end of the meeting, which is open public comment. And if you'd like to speak at the end on any subject, please sign up on the sheet in the back of the room as well. I'll call your name and just ask you to say your name for the record and whether you're a resident of Northampton Township. So first up tonight is, it's always exciting to have Library Week, and I'm going to turn it over to Paula.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. I wanted to recognize the library, and it's Library Week on April 6 through the 12th, and we won't have a meeting until after that, so we're going to recognize our library director right now. That would be Wayne Blair. Is he here?
He's right there.
Long enough, Wayne. Over here. The board recognizes Library Week tonight instead of next month, of course, because our next meeting falls later in April. Okay, the board supervisors proclaim April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week, recognizing libraries as vital community institutions. They promote literacy, education, civic engagement, and economic development. Libraries adapt to evolving needs, support digital literacy, and provide inclusive spaces for learning and connection. Residents are encouraged to visit and celebrate the opportunities that all our library has to offer. This is a long version of the proclamation. You're congratulations on being a great leader and a great director.
Thank you very much. Just like to say thank you to, I have an amazing staff at the library. If you haven't been in, you should stop in. We're in the midst of doing some big things, and we're doing them because I have great support here, both from my bosses, Bob and Bill, but also from the Township Board of Supervisors, who has been incredibly supportive since my arrival in 2022. So, thank you to everyone. Appreciate the recognition, and we welcome you down at the library.
Thanks, Wayne.
Can I just say also, we have an amazing library director.
Well, we're going to have public comment if you would like to say something.
I just want to say how great you've worked for our library.
Oh, thank you.
We're brilliant, and so brilliant. We introduce in different apps. We have Hoopla.
Doesn't she have to say who she is?
Can you just stand up and say your name for the record, since you're making a comment for us? Come on up to the microphone.
Bobby Fine, Lower Holland Road. The staff at the library is amazing. I love Kathleen. She has taught me so much, and they're such an asset to our community, and I don't think people utilize our beautiful library enough for all its resources. If you don't know, there's all different apps, and you can read any magazine you want and plus your books. There's like four or five different apps. If you don't know about them, maybe you should meet with a librarian, and she can educate you and save you money on paying for the movies online. And my Hoopla.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the nice comments. We'll add you to the public comment list for tonight. Thanks. And just one last comment from me. It just always blows my mind that we have north of 150,000 visitors to the library every year, and I always just, I love to say it every time I get the chance. It's just an incredible number of people that go through our library. So, thank you, Wayne, and thanks for the staff for everything you guys do.
Yeah, I love driving by the library and you see the parking lot's just packed with people.
Yes.
You know, it's so good, you know? And people of all ages, which is excellent.
Okay, for public comment, first up, Liz Yaus. Say your name for the record.
Liz Yaus, Churchville.
Thank you.
Can you tell me if Northampton Township still owns the old police station property, or does the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority own it? If the RDA does own it, when did the sale happen and how much did the township receive for the property? If the RDA owns it now, can you tell me why that happened? I'd like to know where the old police station project is in the process and how much time the public has to weigh in on it before decisions have to be made. What are the steps that this board takes in deciding what is the best interest of the township and its residents with regard to this property? How can Northampton citizens express their thoughts about the proposals that we hear tonight? And if someone has an alternative idea, how can they propose it to the Board of Supervisors? I know someone who is in commercial and industrial real estate who has several ideas for that property. I'm sure you will tell us about any meetings that people can attend, and I assume that people can email you their thoughts. Could you tell us how to do that, please? I noticed you made a great change to the Northampton Township website, educating people about the capital projects. Perhaps we could have a place where people can easily go to learn what is happening with this property and provide them a way to weigh in by putting comments on that page. This way, it's more like a discussion and not just individual emails to the board. Maybe we could have a town hall to discuss just this project as more people learn about it and hear about the proposals. It would help those here and watching later to know the best way to stay plugged in. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Ed Mayer?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ed Mayer. I've been a resident of Northampton Township for over 23 years, and I'm here to support Agenda Item Number 9G, the proposal for sale and redevelopment of 50 Township Road, specifically the sale to the Rich Borough Owners Group that will develop the property as a mini-town center. Our oldest son lives in central Jersey and frequently visits, thank goodness, with his wife on the weekends, and for years, they've lamented, along with my younger son, that they always need to go to nearby towns because there isn't a variety of places to go in Northampton. When we invest in initiatives like the Rich Borough Owners Group Mini-Town Center that encourage local development, we're not just improving convenience, we're keeping dollars in our community, we're supporting small businesses, and making Northampton a place where people want to stay. On top of that, we would be making great use of the Courier Times property that has been unoccupied for some time. I've been in this room for more baseball registrations than I can remember, and the classic movie Field of Dreams comes to mind, and there's that famous line, "If you build it, day will come." Well, here in Northampton, I believe if we build it, they may stay. Let's give our residents more reasons to keep their business, their families, and their future right here. I urge the board to support the Rich Borough Owners Group proposal, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Dawn White?
Well, I don't know what the...
Just say your name again for the record.
What, oh, Dawn White, Holland, PA.
Thank you.
I don't really know what the proposal was about for the site. I was just going to comment on that site myself. I didn't know if they were building, changing the zoning, but I don't think that applies if you've already got a proposal for it. I was surprised to see that the circle is going to be coming onto Township Road, so I didn't know if they were going to start building those apartments they were talking about in 2020. If that was, I thought that was gone, but I was just wondering if that was still up in the air and if that's why they were going to put the road in there. So, I think my stuff was kind of changed because I thought that they were going to build something else there. What is the township building they're putting there or they're proposing for there?
Well, I think it's actually on the agenda tonight, so if you just...
Yeah, so I can't really comment till I know what it is.
Yeah, it's been out and advertised for quite a while, so there's been plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, I haven't seen it. I didn't see that on the website. The website has improved a lot. Thank you, but I looked all through it. I didn't see particularly what that proposal was, so I'll get back at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other public comment on agenda items this evening, so we'll move over to approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes of February 26 be approved by unanimous consent.
Any questions for that? Thanks, Paula. Kim, accounts payable.
Yes, I have the bills list for March 12, 2025, total all funds, $1,521,855.88. And I have the bills list for March 26, 2025, total all funds, $1,244,771.
Any questions for Kim? And I have one last, more of a housekeeping item, and it's considering right-of-way applications for pedestrian crossings. We have two pedestrian crossings that we'd like to get a right-of-way application to Tyler Park. One is the multi-use trail from St. Leonard's Road into Tyler State Park, and the other one is a pedestrian crossway at Newtown Richborough Road and Fur Drive. I'm announcing that tonight because the application requires the board to sign the application, so we wanted to make sure we voted on it during consent items. Any questions on that? With no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any consent discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, first item of new business, consider preliminary and final subdivision plan. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. Will the applicant, please come to the table and identify yourselves.
Good evening. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. To my left is Dan Rotundo from Dynamic Engineering, the project engineer.
Okay. For everyone's benefit, this is about a 10-acre parcel on Grenoble Road in Ivyland. It's right across from, I hate to use it as a reference with Rainbow Academy. It's 10-acre parcel, and the applicant here would like to subdivide that into two different parcels. It's up on the screen there. The applicant has gone before the zoning hearing board and the planning commission and received approval for all items here. So, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. Each lot will be just over five acres, as I understand it. What I'd like to do, if I could, is make a motion...
Please.
And then have the advocate comment on any items I have and take it from there. So, I move for preliminary, final subdivision, and land development approval of 1280 Grenoble Road subdivision, SLD 24-5, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers Review Letter dated January 6, 2025. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is subject to the following conditions, which I shall read. The applicant shall enter to a land development and escrow agreement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. In addition, the stormwater management facility shall be a commune basin managed by an association or similar entity, subject to the approval of the township solicitor and the applicable documents. A fee in lieu of recreation open space shall be submitted in the amount of $7,195.46 for the proposed new lot for the terms of the development payment. And the last item is the applicant is responsible for attending any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to the DEP, Conservation District, Health Department, and Municipal Authority. Further, approval is granted for the submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process. So, those are three conditions.
And on behalf of the applicant, all those conditions are acceptable.
Good. Is there anything the applicant would like to comment on, or?
I don't think so. I think your summary is accurate. It's a, as you said, a straightforward minor subdivision, 10-acre parcel subdivided into two almost equal, little over five-acre lots. No other unusual conditions. One house exists today, it will remain, so the net impact is one new home. But otherwise, met with the zoning hearing board, your planning commission, and obviously this evening, and everything is in good order from our standpoint, ready to move forward, and those conditions are acceptable.
Very good, yeah. And the developer who's proposing this project has been, done many projects in town, has good experience with the township, working with the engineers and the planning commission, Mike Solomon, so I would strongly recommend that we proceed with this.
So, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other board discussion? Barry, anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Paula?
No.
I don't have anything. Dean, anything to add? You're the engineer.
Nothing additional.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good.
Congratulations, good luck.
Yep, good luck.
Next, we have bids for 2025 road materials. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Solbury Township advertised bids for bituminous asphalt materials and stone on February 5 and 11 of this year. Bids were received and opened on Monday, February 24 this year at 10:00 a.m. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move that we award contracts for various road paving and related maintenance materials to Eureka Stone Quarry, Shalfon, Pennsylvania, Plumstead Materials in Plumsteadville, Pennsylvania, Miller Materials in Doylestown, Pennsylvania, Walter R. Earl Morrisville LLC in Farmingdale, New Jersey, Highway LLC in Sarver, Pennsylvania, and Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC in Center Valley, Pennsylvania, as recommended by the Public Works Department at their bid prices to the Bucks County Consortium.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'll just say, we've committed as a board to paving repairing 10 miles of road a year, and this is a necessary step to keep our word, so it's a necessary item.
Paula?
Very good, very good news, yes.
Barry?
I agree.
Kim?
Yep, I'm good.
Yep, we want to continue our infrastructure improvements, and road paving is a big part of that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is consider proposals for sale and redevelopment of 50 Township Road, also known as the former police station.
Okay.
Paula?
All righty. I'm sorry. Okay, the, I'm sorry for the delay. The Bucks County Redevelopment Authority, on behalf of the township, issued an RFP in November 2024 for the redevelopment of the former police station. Three proposals were received in December of 2024. Number one is BSI Construction LLC, Rich Borough Owners LLC, and Dallas Properties LLC. However, the proposal did not meet the RFP requirements for the Dallas properties, so they had to be excluded. So, the proposals are BFI Construction. They plan to convert the existing buildings into a physical therapy and a sports rehab facility focused on athlete recovery and injury prevention. And they proposed a price. And then we have the Rich Borough, number two. The other proposal is Rich Borough Owners LLC, and they propose to create a mini-town center, combining the site with the former Courier Times property. And potential uses include brewery/restaurant, sushi restaurant, yoga wellness studio, and an ice creamery. Okay, if the board authorizes an agreement of sale, the developer must go through the land development approval process, including township staff review, planning commission recommendations, and final board approval. May I make a motion to...
Please.
Okay, I move to authorize the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to enter into an agreement of sale with the Rich Borough Owners LLC for sale and redevelopment of 50 Township Road, and authorize the township manager, on behalf of the township, to execute all required documents related to the sale and redevelopment of the property.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
See, we have a motion and a second. Paula, do you have any additional comments?
No, I'm excited about this. I think this is growth for Rich Borough Northampton Township. I think it's going to be an excellent place we can walk to, we can drive right around the corner.
Barry?
No, I think it's, I support strongly. I think it's going to be better for residents. People are very excited about it. They even talked to a lot of the local businesses, they're very excited about it. It's one of the concepts like a rising tide lifts all boats, so having more of a town center, it's going to help all the other businesses in the area. It's also going to create jobs for the development, which is good, helping other businesses. The other thing, too, from a tax perspective of this proposal, will probably put anywhere from $6 or $7 million worth of investment in the town center, which would be a nice tax base that we can use not only for the township, but also for the county and also for the school district. So, this use of the project is very good for that, and developer has a lot of expertise in this area, so I would highly recommend it.
Bob?
I would just say, understanding there are some benchmarks that will still need to be met, given the options and a review of the plans, this is by far the one with the most potential and I think makes the most sense for the long-term betterment of the township.
Thanks. Kim?
Yes, so I looked at both proposals, and you know what? Both had good ideas. Both are Northampton residents, which I like that. The Rich Borough Owners did offer $10,000 more than BSI, but I have to tell you, when you look at both, I mean, they're both, neither of them are bad ideas, but the one, the BSI, you're just going to have the development on 1.33 acres of land. They're not going to take the building down, they're just going to kind of fix it up a little bit. It's not going to make a big change. But with the Trinity Group, they are taking the Courier Times building and the old police station, which will give them 1,600 square feet of retail space with, everybody talked about it, with yoga studio, restaurant, and the best part of the restaurant, it's not going to be a pizzeria. That's the best part of all. 16,000. 16,000. And then we also have 26,000 in the Trinity Group, 26,000 feet of green space, walkable paths, benches, and open fields. I just think that when you're thinking about the future of our community, thinking big instead of thinking small, I just think that the Trinity Group, the Rich Borough Owners, is definitely the better idea. And the other thing I did want to remind everybody, too, is that just because we're approving it now doesn't mean that they have to follow all the rules for zoning, they have to go through land development, they have to do everything else. They're not getting, you know, it's not a shortcut in any way. So, and I think that's it. That's all I have.
Thanks. Just a couple of things from me. First of all, in the January meeting, Mr. Pellegrino presented and read out the two proposals to the public, so there's been opportunities since January for anybody to reach out. I actually did have some people reach out to me. By far, the majority of people that reached out to me liked the town center concept more than the physical therapy. I did have one person that did like the physical therapy idea, but definitely the town center was certainly in the lead from the comments that I got from the public. Just for clarity, the bid for the physical therapy was $940,000, and the bid for the town center concept is $950,000, and that's the amount that Paula's motion covers for tonight. I think the town center will be a really nice addition. I think it'll be a great improvement. The old Courier Times facility, and I don't really know exactly, but I'm going to go out on a limb, it's probably been vacant for 25 years. It really needs some attention. It's been sitting there tired, and this particular plan incorporates the use of that property. It's a really nice reuse of that property in addition to the old PD, so it really takes that entire corner and really beautifies it. And to me, that's an investment in our community. We will get a lot of benefit from it. I like the sushi and ice cream part, but the brewery sounds good, too. So, we'll have to see how that shakes out. But it is important to recognize that the land development process, that entire process, there are also opportunities for public comment along the way. One of the questions tonight was, how can we interject our feelings and et cetera about that project, and there will be time to do that as well. So, with that, I think we had a motion and a second in all the comments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are they here? You guys are here tonight, right? Congratulations, good luck to you. Still got a little bit of a ways to go, but good luck moving forward. Liaisonary reports. Kim?
Oh, yes. Okay, first, the senior center. Exciting spring league news. Friday, April 4 marks the start of the men and women's golf league. Spring and summer billiards registration ends on Friday, April 4, and the league begins on Monday, April 14. Monday, April 21 is the bocce league registration beginning. Have you purchased your senior center lottery tickets? The first drawing is on Tuesday, April 8. Tickets are $10, and you can purchase them at the center. In celebration of Earth Day, Tuesday, April 22, Park and Rec's Kristen Fullerton will visit the senior center to teach a Learn to Compost workshop. Burpee Seed Company has kindly donated a variety of flower and vegetable seeds to be distributed to participants and seniors that visit the center on Earth Day. On Thursday, April 24, the Northampton Township Police Department will be at the senior center to provide an informative presentation on fraud prevention. Spring is here. The center will host its annual spring fling shopping event on Friday, April 25, from 5:00 to 8:30. Join us for a fun-filled evening of shopping. And now Parks and Rec. Spring has sprung, and the Parks and Rec team is ready for it. April is full of trips and events for adults, children, and entire families. On April 2, the Broadway trip to see Megan Hilty in Death Becomes Her, only eight seats left. Beginning April 4, grab the kids and hunt the egg signs at the 10 township facilities and collect the secret word behind each of them. When your family solves the message, email Kristen@kfullerton.com. When your family solves the message, email Kristen@kfullerton@nhtwp.org with your child's name and age. Put egg hunt in the subject line, and your child could win a prize. Speaking of eggs, register for breakfast with the bunny. Breakfast will be held at 9:30 on Saturday, April 12th, at the North Hampton Township Senior Center. Enjoy a great meal, magical entertainment, dancing, and a craft to take home. Tickets are selling fast and must be purchased by April 4th. Camp registration is almost full. 478 out of 500 possible spots for our summer camps have been reserved. Register today and make 2025 a summer your child will never forget. This past week, members of the Park and Rec Department traveled to Hershey for the annual Pennsylvania Rec and Park Society Conference. Sessions include AI in Parks and Rec, customer service, starting a farmer's market, enhancing the summer camp experience, and so much more. We are proud to congratulate Derek Giannetti, Operations Manager, for graduating from the 2025 Leadership Academy and presenting his team's final project to conference attendees. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Now, for those in the room, if you're wondering what I was gesturing about, I got a note that the sound was having a technical glitch, so I was kind of working with our control room upstairs, but the sound is working now, so all that hand gesturing was just me trying to get the sound back on. Sorry about that. Paula?
Okay. I want to start with the Veterans Advisory Commission. For our Memorial Day celebrations, we're asking everyone and residents to find letters, if you have them, that may, you may have received when your family or friends were serving time in the military, and we'd like to read them on Memorial Day. You can email Lisa Russo at North Hampton Township, or you can give us a call at the township at 215-357-6800. Okay, Memorial Day is going to, the celebration is going to be on May 26th at 9:00 a.m. at Dobrowski Park, which is the center of Richborough where the Waterfall Park is. And let's see, if there's any interest at all, there is a short flag ceremony, raising ceremony, and it's raised by the Marine Corps, and it's right in front of the township building. And that starts at 8:00 a.m. It's the same day, and it's open to the public. Okay, and everyone and a resident of North Hampton has an opportunity to purchase a brick to honor the vet. Bricks are placed along the walkway at the township building. It's called the Vet Memorial. Okay, I also wanted to mention one here. Kristin Marcel, our state rep, has a couple of things going on. I don't know how much she advertises. There is a senior expo on March 28th. You can probably Google that if you Google her, the state rep. It's at Springville Country Club. It's 10 to 1 for the senior expo. Then there is a shredding event. She's going to be there on Saturday, April 26th, if anyone needs, at the community park in Warminster, if anyone needs shredding. And then there is a veterans luncheon, and she's helping with hosting that. That's Thursday, September 18th at 11:30. So look those up on Kristin's website. And I also wanted to mention, last but not least, is a Churchville resident, Dennis Klinger. He applied, and he was selected to be on our Veterans Advisory Commission Board. So he's had two tours in Iraq, and he's, he's proud, and he's honored, and he's going to come to our next meeting. Okay, and then I have a library report. I'm just looking. After multiple interviews with the Strategic Plan Committee, the Library Board and the Administration approved engaging OPN architects to develop a master concept, visioning, and feasibility study. The architect team will be onsite at the library April 7 and 8 to begin developing a plan for potential building improvements along with cost estimates. As the library branding initiative finalizes, the Library Board approved a recommendation to begin work with a new website designer. The company is Library Site Works, and they have experience of working with more than 75 public libraries. And last month, Wayne Larr, the library director, hosted a breakfast, a meeting at the library for North Hampton Township Business and Professional Association. And he did, definitely provided an overview of the library services, resources, and all the program that's offered to everyone that comes, the attendees. On Sunday, April 6th, the library will be, will be hosting a volunteer lunch to thank all the volunteers for their help through the year. On a final note, I wanted to acknowledge one of our board members, and he's Dr. Charles Beam. He is, he's a teacher, professor at the Community College, and he was awarded the 2024 Lindbach Distinguished Teaching Award, and that recognizes a faculty member who has demonstrated excellence in teaching and student impact. So congratulations, Charles. That's great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Historical Commission, we would like to welcome Johanna Hartman-English, Jordan Suchi, and Michael Yankelovich as new members. Staff and commission members continue to work on the cemetery restoration project involving the township-owned Addisville Reformed Church Cemetery on Second Street Pike and the Feaster Van Horn Cemetery on Middle Holland Road. Updates on the projects will be coming in the next few months. Also, there's a new exhibit entitled "A Local Veteran at World War II," which showcases former police officer and resident William Raymond Shaw's World War II military service on display. Visit the Free Library until July, which is through when the exhibit runs, and honor a member of what truly was this country's greatest generation. The Commission is taking orders for historic house plaques from homeowners. This is a project that has been ongoing since 2022. It began with the 300th anniversary and does continue. If anyone feels they're eligible or is interested in inquiring, contact the Archives at 215-357-3050 (extension 114), or by email. And the site is archivist@nhtwp.org. You can find more information there. Also, as part of my now-long-running and promised monthly update on what we've called the PFOS issue, I did want to remind everyone that if you believe you are impacted or you have any questions or inquiries, please call the municipal authority. Not only will they address your questions, but they, or the engineers, if need be, will be happy to come out to your residents, discuss the issue with you, and see if you are or are not impacted or are potentially impacted. And I would like to reiterate something I've said, I think, month in and month out. The bipartisan relentless efforts of everyone on this board and everyone in this township to try to force the remediation of this issue by the Navy, hold those who are responsible, responsible financially, and to expedite the repairs and remediation of this project should not be overlooked. We will not stop as a board, as a township, until this is fixed, period. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Mind if I mention the letter?
Please.
We did send, I sent a letter to the Acting Secretary of the Department of Environmental Protection on behalf of all the members of the board, our residents, and especially our residents that were impacted. You may have seen that letter. It was posted on the township website. And it specifically asked her to give us the same level of help that they quickly gave to the Upper Makefield residents, you know, a couple of months ago when they had that terrible pipeline leak. I think the people in Upper Makefield were negatively impacted, and I think that the DEP did a pretty good job of quickly rushing down there and helping those folks. And all I did was ask for the same level of response here. I asked her, I asked her to use all the resources that the DEP has and all the influence that they have to help us get our residents clean drinking water. And that was sent with the, with the sanctions of everyone on the board, to the DEP secretary. If you don't, if you haven't seen the letter, you can look and see it, it's on our website. We really are working hard to, to try to get that impact reduced out there in Churchville and anywhere it may be. Thanks. Thanks for letting me add on. Barry?
Yes, thanks, Tom. Just a couple of things. People may have heard about a townhouse development on the corner of Jacksonville Road and Commerce Drive, this right across from the existing townhouse on Springville Country Club. There was a developer who was going to put some townhouses there. It was supposed to go before the zoning hearing board, but the applicant has now pulled the application. So that's on hold for now, so we're not sure what's going to happen with that. But that was something that I know a lot of people had questions on about what was going to happen with that, but that's, that's been pulled. The only thing I'll report on is last night, I had a very enjoyable meeting with the school board. They had a meeting on full-day kindergarten, and I have to really give a lot of credit to the school board administration for just doing an outstanding job of organizing full-day kindergarten. It's been fully approved by the Board of School Board Members, and so for September of 2025, we'll have full-day kindergarten in all the elementary schools in Council Rock School District. It's very exciting. They're right now in the process of hiring the teachers. Kids are signing up, so they have signs around town asking kids to sign up for the school. One thing that's important to realize is that there's no redistricting required whatsoever. So a lot of people are concerned that we have to move students from school to school. None of that's required at all for the full-day kindergarten. And in fact, all elementary schools have the capacity today with existing classrooms to support the full-day kindergarten. So people are very excited about it. I know talking around town, I have, you know, I have seven grandkids, and, you know, one of my grandkids is going to start at Richville Elementary in the fall, and she's super excited about it, and all her friends are. As I mentioned before, the cost to the residents and township was only $35 per household, whopping $35 per household for the entire year to pay for full-day kindergarten. And at the, before having full-day kindergarten, Council Rock was rated in the bottom 13% of all schools in the state of Pennsylvania. So 87% of the schools had full-day kindergarten, we did not, now we have it, which is very good. So that's all I wanted to report. But once again, the school board administration has done an outstanding job on it.
Thanks, Barry. I don't have any report this evening. I'll go to manager's report.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant manager's report. Bill?
Good evening. I do have a couple items to announce. Starting this week, you may have seen PICO crews, they have hired contractors of Asplun Tree Service to start trimming the power lines within the township. Refer to, we put a post on our news section of our website to show a map of where they will be working for the coming months. They'll be in town through the spring, working on clearing all the trees from all their utility lines. Also, next week, you'll see some activity down at, on Second Street Pike. The Ironworks Creek Sidewalk Project will begin. JDM is the contractor hired by the state to connect sidewalks from Tanyard Road up to the Crossings Plaza and the Produce Junction facility over that Ironworks Creek Bridge. So that work will start next week. There'll be no lane restrictions, and all the businesses will have access throughout the project. And lastly, as mentioned earlier, we did launch a capital projects portal on our township website. We're listing all the major projects that are coming to fruition after many, many years of planning. You go in there, you'll see an icon that shows the project, and you can click on that to get details about the project. That's where we will be announcing upcoming news and updates about the projects, including start dates, detours if they require it, and so forth. So I encourage all residents and anybody interested to sign up on our township website, the top right-hand corner, create an account if you don't already have one, to add your email address to get updates on all these projects. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Bill. I'll tell you, we're getting a lot of feedback already on how great that capital projects portion is. Some of that stuff was there, but now it's all centralized, it's easy to get to. Just one thing I would add on that, that are, they are projects that are township-sponsored or working on. Not every private project that happens in the township on private land would be posted there. They'd be posted in different places for land development, et cetera, but these are the projects, the larger projects that the township is working on. Thanks, Bill, and kudos to the, to the website, really.
Thank you.
Came out great. Solicitor's report. Mr. Peizo?
Yes, the minutes should reflect that the Board of Supervisors met in an executive session immediately prior to this evening's meeting for approximately an hour. Present for the executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the township manager, the assistant township manager, the township engineers. I was present for only part of it, and for part of it, Jeff Darwak, the executive director of the County Redevelopment Authority, was present. Two matters were discussed during the executive session. One was a matter involving the potential sale of real estate. No official action was taken in regard to that matter. The second was a matter of pending litigation. Again, no official action was taken during that matter. No official action was required at this evening's meeting in regard to the matter of litigation and the matter, the board did act on the matter of potential sale of real estate during this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers' report. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give an update on the North Hampton Crossing Basin retrofit project. Construction is scheduled to begin next week as well on that project and should take about three to four weeks to complete. Construction should generally be limited to the basin itself, but you may see construction crews in the vicinity of Holland and Upper Holland Road. And as a reminder, this is funded through a DEP grant and will be our largest undertaking for our MS4 obligations, so positive note for our DEP MS4 regulations.
Thanks, Amanda. Dean Carr?
Yes. Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to report on a few things. We have three bids that are currently out, four proposals. One is going to be due on April 8th, and that is the Jacksonville bump-out project, we call. We're adding a bump-out over at Jacksonville Road to basically improve a condition where there was a concern with traffic extending past the right turn lane to get up to Bristol Road. So that will be due, and then we have two bids on April 11th. One is the milling program for this year's 2025 summer repaving, and the other is a traffic signal that's being proposed at St. Leonard's Road, and both, except both of those are due on April 11th.
Great. Thanks, Dean. Okay, public comment. First up, Dawn White. You could say your name again, although we did hear from you earlier, but thank you.
Dawn White from Holland.
Thank you.
I do, I love the new website. It's, I was playing around with that and getting information on the roundabouts, and the question I have is the, I was looking at the old plans for Holland and Richborough, and I know a lot of it has changed. I wonder if there's going to be an update on the Holland plan? I know, like, they used to have roadways going through the Wright property, and it was going to come into the shopping center. It's still on the website. That's why I was wondering if they were doing an update on, on the Holland plan now that, you know, I don't know what's going on with the Wawa, or if that put a monkey wrench in the original plan that they did, and they had town hall meetings and stuff that they were, it's, you have that, and the North Hampton plan is all in there. Everything was like easier to find, and I was just wondering if they're going to have, like, he has timelines for the, for the capital plans. I was wondering, they were going to do like timelines for what the state's coming in to do in Holland with the timeline for the bridge, the roadways, and if that's going to be done before they start building the apartments? And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Pellegrino. I think you can answer a couple of those questions.
Yes. There are Holland and Richborough master plans. There's a township comprehensive plan. There are plans for trails and bicycles, bike lanes. We have a lot of what are called master plans. They're generally not updated more frequently than 10 years. There was a mention of the Wawa project, wherever that is. That has no bearing on the master plans. Each individual project that might come in doesn't have a bearing on the master plan. If those projects enhance the plans, they're received more positively. If they don't, they might be received more negatively, but there are no plans to update any of those, those master plans right now.
Thanks. Just one thing I'd just point out, there are no apartments coming to Holland? I'm not sure what you meant. Okay, do you mean out at the mill race?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they are condominiums. They are not apartments. Okay.
You know, they were getting started before or after the state was coming in to do the bridge and the roadway.
Do you know a timeline on that?
We don't have a timeline from the developer yet, since that was just approved. There's probably 60 days or 90 days of agreements, escrows to be established. And the timing of the-
Are the bridge be done first?
Pardon me?
They're not dependent on each other.
They're not dependent on each other.
So it can be done before the bridge is put in.
Actually, Mr. Carr might have a better idea. Do you have an idea of the Holland Road or the Buck Road Improvement Project?
I do not at this-
You don't have a timeline?
Yeah, I don't have a timeline on that.
That project is something that the township started. We invested funding into preliminary engineering. We were fortunate enough to get the project fully funded for construction and final engineering by the state. Very difficult to get projects now on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a 12-year plan. We have three projects on the State Transportation Improvement Plan. There's two roundabouts and the Buck Road Streetscape improvements, which includes not only improvements to Buck Road, a new bridge, new traffic signal, and realignment of Buck and Old Bristol Roads, but enhancements to the village in terms of streetlights and sidewalks. The two roundabouts are a different matter. One is at Jacksonville and Alms House Road. That project looks like it might start toward the end of this year. If not, I expect it would be early next year. The Richborough Roundabout Project is likely a 2026, 2027 project. We've been talking about those projects for about 10 years. This is not something new. The same thing with the Buck Road Streetscape Project. We started all of these about 10 years with concept plans. The township invested into the preliminary engineering, not so much for Jacksonville and Alms House, because when we presented concept plans, there was such a need and a demand for improvements at that intersection that the Bucks County Planning Commission picked up on it and pushed it through to the state and got funding for it more quickly. And that's frankly why the project is starting sooner than the other ones that we've been talking about for a lot longer. But these are not new projects. But we are very fortunate. The Buck Road Streetscape Project is going to be about a $12 to $14 million investment in infrastructure, which is all state funding. The Richborough Roundabout is about a $6 million investment, and I believe the Jacksonville Road and Alms House Roundabout is about a $4 to $4.5 million investment, all state-funded.
If I may add to that, the Buck Road Project, you'll see activity starting this year because the water, North Hampton Bucks Water and Sewer Authority has to relocate lines ahead of the PennDOT coming in to do the bridge. So later this year, you'll see activity down there with the authority moving their utility lines out of the way in advance of the project. So again, sign up for notices, and when they get started, we'll let everybody know.
Yeah, and there is a plan on Buck Road, at least from what we're hearing by PennDOT, to keep traffic open during the bridge construction. There may be periods where it will be closed for the bridge replacement on a short-term basis. We do believe that there's going to be a closure to replace the sewer line that has to be relocated, as Bill said, in advance of the bridge replacement. So that's going to happen first. That's being done by the municipal authority. The next step would be the bridge replacement, which would be part of the larger project. And then finally, the intersection work and Streetscape work along Buck Road, which would be, I guess, on the north side of the bridge, all the way up to Buck and Holland Roads. So that's the area of improvement. There's going to be, hopefully, with the improvements at Buck and Old Bristol, an improvement in traffic flow through the village. When we first started these projects in 2014, 15, started thinking about them, putting concept plans together, and finally doing the engineering, our traffic engineers identified Buck and Old Bristol intersection and the bridge width as the real problem causing bottlenecks in Holland. So our focus was to get the bridge replaced, get a wider bridge, enhance the left-turn lanes going up, down Buck Road and up Old Bristol. So there'll be left-turn lanes coming down Old Bristol. There'll be left-turn lanes going up Old Bristol, more stacking for vehicles going through the village, and more opportunity for through traffic, which hopefully will eliminate the traffic congestion in the village.
Thanks. Alyssa White? Just state your name again.
Hi, Alyssa White, Holland.
Thank you.
I have my bullet points on here. Okay. So my main concerns were, like, fundamentally changing our township through environment, green spaces, high-density housing. I know there's a few rumors floating around about high-density housing projects, and some of them are old. Historical preservation and unnecessarily complicated road projects. And the green spaces, one was addressed through the Town Center project that you mentioned earlier. I do really appreciate that because I think that Richborough has been urbanizing of late, and a lot of concrete has been going in and blacktop and not enough green space. So that project will be great. And it's more of like, you guys said, a town center rather than just random green space. So it's going to actually be usable. So that's really great. And then the unnecessarily complicated road projects that I was thinking about, like, the one that was proposed in the past, and I know that the project that was mentioned before about the Wawa has been obviously put on hold and legal stuff going on with that and all that. But the roadway that was mentioned earlier about going through the Wright property, I think that it overcomplicates the situation because right now, the traffic light where it's at, that backs up as well, where Holland and Buck Road come into each other. I mean, there's been times where you're sitting at the Buck Road traffic light for, like, three lights because Holland just barrels right through the traffic. They just, they'll sit right in the intersection, not letting anybody out. I think personally, the best solution for that, regardless of any project, would be to reroute Holland Road through, what's the roadway there? I had it in my head earlier. What's that? Roxville, yes. Reroute Holland Road through Roxville and turn the current Holland Road into a private road after Roxville. Put the traffic light where Buck Road and Roxville meet, and then that way you can get rid of the current traffic light and put a traffic light at Chinkapin, which also backs up because you can't get out Chinkapin during rush hour either. And the other projects, the unnecessarily complicated road projects are the circles. Personally, I don't particularly like circles because I feel like, especially in high-traffic areas, there will be an issue like with what goes on with Buck Road and Holland Road, where one side will just keep going straight through, and the other side will be stuck there for 20, 30 minutes. And the other issue I have, the environment. So a lot of construction projects have been proposed, and my concern with the environment and the green spaces. So the project, the town project is really great because, yeah, it's construction, but is also creating green space. But there's other projects, such as in Holland, that are actually going to be getting rid of green space. And I feel like right now, like, it's like every little, like, square foot of Holland has been being developed of late. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Next up, Ferenc? Did I say that right? Kovak?
I just checked in. I don't have any-
Oh, okay, nothing to add. Okay, thank you. And Joe Lombardo. Joe, just state your name for the record.
Joe Lombardo, Holland.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board for approving the materials for the road reconstruction or the road renovations, and for also the commitment of the 10 miles. I drive around the township quite a bit, and the 10 miles is definitely needed, and so I appreciate that. And if there's any materials left, maybe you can go 11, 10, half or 11. That would be appreciated. That's all I'm saying. But it's needed to hit some potholes on the way over. So if you can do anything with the potholes too, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. There's no other names and no other business this evening. The meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I quickly name Holland or-
Sure. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Aranjan Mukherjee in Churchville.
Hi.
And thank you. I didn't prepare a speech, so I'll just speak a few thoughts that I have in my mind. I've been living here for 23 years, and I heavily, heavily use the library. So I thank current director, the directors that came before, the staff that have retired, and the current staff, because they are doing a really fantastic job. So kudos. I also drive by, used to drive by when on my way to work past the county courier times, and I liked the big block Gothic letters on it. And I fantasized one day in writing for this famous newspaper. And eventually, I wrote two opinions for it, so good. I subscribe to it online. Thirdly, you've done a great job on your new website, which is very user-friendly and informative. Now, the last meeting, I looked at the videos. I saw it twice, and the mill race in came up. And I think, Bobby pointed out that there are some questions on it, and rightfully so. And Dr. Rose, you pointed out that you were happy that we are building condos for seniors who are trying to downsize, et cetera. You can look at me, I am a senior. So that took my attention. I went down there for a look. It clearly is blighted and has been there for a long, long time. So the board has done a great job in trying to solve it. And then I did a little research and pulled up the FEMA flood plan for the area. And I started thinking that in trying to solve one problem, are we unnecessarily or unwittingly creating another one? Because we have to get rid of that old dilapidated structure, no doubt, 100% agreed. And the natural thing for me, I think, would be you pull that down, there is a river that going through it, make it into a nice park with walking trails and a few benches, let the flowers bloom, let the deer roam. There was a sign for a controlled deer hunt. Let the children play. That would be cheap and simple. But I know as a board, you have obligations. You need to build constructs for housing. You need to get some revenue. And I'm sure you and the builders have done a fantastic job, did the best of your technical ability to mitigate the risks for floods. But it is a designated flood zone. It has flooded multiple times, and it will flood again. Nature has a way of surprising us. Whether it's Jurassic Park, which is fiction, or Hurricane Harvey in Houston, they're very well-known builders built housing in flood-prone areas, 100-year floodplains, as this one is, and somehow Hurricane Harvey overwhelmed them. What if that happens here? Insurance rates are going to rise because those mortgages will need flood insurance. Insurance will pay. And our insurance premiums will rise, as they have been for the last few years. Fires in California, hurricanes Florida, floods in many places, Louisiana and Houston. So I just wonder, when there is a huge storm and mobility-restricted seniors in wheelchairs befuddled from medication, maybe a couple of drinks from the bars nearby, and the power goes out, will the elevators work? Will the garage door openers work? I don't know. And that's what makes me think about it. I'm sure there are plans for this, and you can let us know how these would be mitigated. But in the future, as such situations come up, I just hope there'll be a more long-term thinking about just the wisdom of building housings in dangerous zones. That's all.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comment. Having no other business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.